It's cold.
It's cold.
We got just one couple.
Did you?
I saw you play.
Very oldies.
Yeah.
They had a few.
They have a few all over here.
We'll have a memorial service later.
I listen to a lot of them. I do so well.
I had a few on the outside.
Thank you.
He thinks, oh yeah, he thinks it's a flag. Oh yeah.
Is that right?
Yes.
He's saying it.
He's serving the bottom of the road.
So.
I mean, I assume our IT guys know that.
Yeah.
There you go. Yeah. We might need to check on that just to make sure it's legit.
The fines.
The fine is like, I forget, I think they said thirty-five or fifty thousand dollars. Ooh, what?
That's different.
That's not good. Yeah. That's our subject. Alright. One last call before if anyone else would like to speak, please sign up. Alright. It is time, ladies and gentlemen, for our regular meeting. Let us all rise. Fledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda, and we have a couple of revisions to the agenda. Commissioner Brigham was called out of town unexpectedly this morning on business, and so that has necessitated the removal and postponement to the future meeting of item four on our agenda, which is the energy-saving program manager for Appalachian Voices, and item number six, which is the Pizzca National Forest Revision Plan Resolution. We also will need to amend, we have no need this evening for a closed session, so the Chair will entertain a motion to remove those three items from the agenda and move the others up on the list appropriately. So moved by Commissioner Rice.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Briggs. Any further discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Alright. We have now moved on to the approval of the February fourteen and February twenty-eight minutes, which were sent out by staff. Are there any revisions or corrections on the February fourteen and February twenty-eight minutes? Being none, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the February fourteen and February twenty-eight two thousand seventeen minutes as submitted. So moved. Moved by Commissioner Wettman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rice. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the approval, let it be known by raising your right hand. The minutes for February fourteen and February twenty-eight are approved. The next item on our agenda is Ross Young, who's Director of Madison County Cooperative Extension.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm very sorry. My bad. My bad. I jumped right in. That was not intentional. Okay? Public comment? You see, I'm still learning, so everybody has to help me here.
It's small, I said.
Yeah, that's what it is. I would like to remind the two individuals who have signed up to speak to please honor the three-minute force, if you'd be kind enough to help us with that. And first up is Rachel, and make sure I pronounce your last name right.
Scirlock. Rochelle Scirlock.
Okay, Rochelle, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to make a public comment on an issue that I find relevant. My name is Rochelle Scirlock, and I have been living in Madison County, Mars Hill, for the past five years. I recently shared some emails with you all regarding the sale of the community center buildings on both the island and Marshall and on Bailey Street in Mars Hill. I see now that the Marshall location no longer appears on the surplus property list, and I hope that that means that that center has more time before the county opts to sell it. The Old Rock School in downtown Mars Hill, however, still appears to be for sale at this time, and I wanted to be here tonight to go on record to, as a citizen who feels that the selling off of this holding could be a real loss to our county because of its historical significance, future potential, prime location, and property values, which are only on the increase in our area. I understand that although I'm newer to the area and to this issue, the issue of the renovation and maintenance of this old building is not new, and after reviewing a copy of the last building assessment for this property, I understand why you all opted not to renovate it for use of expanding the early college school program. Since renovations made for community buildings would be much less demanding and therefore much less expensive than that of a school, I still wonder, however, if it would be possible to follow the examples of its sister schools built at the same time through the same program. Both Spring Creek and Ebs Chapel Community Centers have been able to successfully take their old schools, secure them against further weather damage, and slowly renovate them over time as monies are raised. I wonder if enough interest exists in the community to save the old Mars Hill School in the same way. If it doesn't, and I'm just too late to the game, should we at least consider the best possible Plan B? It is my understanding that old buildings like this one, which is on the historical registry, by the way, can be listed for sale on their site to increase the chances that it will be sold to someone with preservation in mind. A preservation covenant can be added at the sale, which would also help protect it. And may I please suggest that any monies made by the sale of this property directly go back into the Mars Hill community for the purposes of community enrichment? Two specific ideas that come to mind are either to add the proceeds to the Parks and Rec budget, which is always in need of indoor practice facilities across the county, including in Mars Hill, or please consider using the proceeds to expand the Mars Hill Greenway project so that it can meet up with the Bailey Mountain Park and Trails effort and help that conservation initiative. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for telling me that so well.
Practice. Chris Watson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I sent you all an email concerning the on-bill financing resolution. It's up tonight, it's going to be postponed until next month, but I want to go ahead and just mention something in case I can't come next month. I just want to reiterate the need for energy efficiency improvements in Madison County, both for the low-income families that the agency I work with supports, as well as, you know, middle-class families that struggle with poor housing, uninsulated housing. You know, there's a real need. We have neighbors in need, we have DSS that serves folks here in Madison County, Church of Sacred Heart, Marshall Baptist, and many others who spend a lot of time and effort raising money, chopping firewood, you know, helping people directly with their heating assistance, but there is almost no service except for, you know, the five homes that Community Action can serve through federal weatherization dollars. It is doing much to help that problem, so we're putting a lot of effort into raising money and helping people, but we're not putting a lot of effort into actually solving the problem. And what we're looking at here through on-bill financing, our other energy efficiency efforts, is to try to address the issue so that we don't continue to just throw money down the well. With that being said, you know, what I would request of you all as community leaders and all of us as community leaders is to get informed about what energy efficiency programs are, what on-bill financing is, and the real opportunity there, whether it's on-bill financing or some other kind of program, maybe through the utilities, maybe through some kind of other community organization that is sustainable, that helps the community, that is available to all citizens, and then learn about those and then support those efforts in any way that you can, and get out into the public and talk to the public about what they need and what they would support. And I really appreciate all of your time in coming to community meetings to support energy efficiency and working with both Appalachian Voices and all the organizations here in Madison County that are working to help folks with high energy needs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Right. Now, we'll get over my bed, Ross Young, Madison County Cooperative Extension.
He's the same chart to breakfast, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Mr. Chairman, Professors, thank you for allowing me a few minutes on this snowy day. I know you all have business to do and want to get home, so I will be brief. This is basically just a report of Cooperative Extension, and what I want to do is basically go over these two graphics in front of you. I'm going to start with the green one. It starts with Madison County local farmer's food profile at the top. So basically, March is Ag Awareness Month, so I wanted to take an opportunity to mention the fact that eighty-four billion dollars of the state's economy is taken care of by agriculture, which is pretty big. That's seventeen percent of the state's income, so, and that counts agribusiness. That's not all, dirt farming, top, and cows and plants, that's more than that, but it's still very significant in North Carolina and still significant in Madison County. The graphic in front of you has on it some arrows pointing down and some arrows pointing up. Generally speaking, when you look at the arrows pointing down, that's reflecting a decrease in number of farms, a decrease in number of acres, a decrease in number of animals in Madison County over a period of time. As you know, this is not new data. Some of this stuff takes a while to get generated, so if you look at the top, it's two thousand twelve data, reflecting back to two thousand and seven. But it does tell a picture that's relevant to today's story in Madison County. So what we've seen basically is a decrease and a continued decrease in some of what most of us grew up in this area with wholesale farming. That's where we're growing it and we're selling products wholesale versus retail, the baka beef cattle being the primary culprits in that, and the pieces of the puzzle that put a lot of us through school and builder homes and kept us fed during the winter, caught Christmas if nothing else. A lot of that is represented by those downturn arrows. The good news is, is that the green arrows are there. You know, there's some counties in western North Carolina where all these arrows are pointing down. In Madison County, there's a bunch of them pointing up. The ones pointing up, when you look at them, they are representative of a different type of farming that is taking over in Madison County, taking over in a good way. We have got a large increase in direct sale marketing, direct sale farming, farms doing CSAs, farms doing agritourism, farms selling tailgate markets, farmers creating and growing vegetables, food products that are sold direct or semi-direct, and all those areas have pretty significant numbers on them representing that. So it's my pleasure in my world to be able to be a piece of that. I give the credit to the farmers and the people who are doing the innovative new opportunities in farming, but I get the chance to help them every now and then and provide some support in those regards, so pretty fortunate there. That's graphic number one. Graphic number two is one that's more of the red at top, and that is a direct infographic relating to two thousand sixteen and our office. So what I'm going to do with it is just go through that graph, kind of left to right, top to bottom, and point out some of the details that are mentioned there. We keep a lot of records and try to keep up with who we talk to and what we have in terms of how we share things with people and what impacts those are. Those impacts are not always easy to understand and document, and sometimes they're estimates, but nonetheless, we've got numbers to show for. Class reached at your top left, right above a pie chart, seventeen thousand five hundred seventy-six. That's the number of individuals totally combined that my audience would have spoken to or sent something directly to, be it a mail or even an email, but went directly to an individual. Those are represented broken out below. We've got six thousand of those were face-to-face. That's like me now, if I were talking to you now and giving you information, that on the phone, on the farm, would be two different categories. If I'm on the farm, in a class, that's face-to-face. If I'm on the phone, sending you an email, that's in that non-face-to-face category, the green one. We also have a yellow category you're looking at, is one thousand six hundred and sixty-two individuals reached by our volunteers. So we train volunteers to share our information. For example, we're in every second-grade classroom teaching in biology. One of my kids are in second grade, and I got the chance to go in and help teach that one, but we teach some volunteers to do some of that. So when they're in there reaching those kids, teaching those kids how to hatch eggs or how to make an omelet, that's an expansion of our work utilizing those volunteers, and that number's represented in yellow. If you look to the middle of the page, you've got one hundred ninety-one educational events. Those are opportunities where we're either teaching a kid how to make an omelet or hatch an egg, or I'm standing in front of a group of farmers showing them a new technique on how to prune apples, whatever that event is. We had one hundred ninety-one of those. That's actually a low number for us because we had some staff that are building up their ability to teach more classes, so hopefully that number will grow. The red box is how that's happening, workshops, meetings, demonstrations, seminars, et cetera. The far right, the four-leaf clover you see represents 4H. We have nine hundred and eighty-three youth in our county that are touched through 4H programs. It doesn't mean they're all in a 4H club per se, that's a smaller number, but we have folks who are reached with the school-age curriculum in the school. Third grade, for example, we teach third graders where the food comes from and teach them how to grow a garden. So we're out there getting dirty with them, planting plants, harvesting plants, and tasting kale, and, you know, it's amazing how many third graders have never tasted kale or bok choy or some of this stuff. Ranch dressing, that's the key. And they change their mind, but it's fun to see the light bulb go on.
I only think they were ranch dressing.
I get the opportunity to even teach. I'm a coach of an archery program, so believe it or not, we will teach about anything in 4H. So if you've got a volunteer or an interest out there that somebody wants to pursue, be it gardening, we have clogging clubs, we've had forest clubs, we've had this robotics club in Buckham County, we used to have a geocaching club where they go find stuff with electronics, and then we do an archery club. So we can create a club on anything there's interest on. Left side of the page, second pie chart, value-added center. What I'm referring to there is the backside of our office where the loading docks are and the coolers. Tremendous number of people benefit from that, seven hundred and eighty-six to be exact. Splitting those in a lot of categories, but the way it makes sense to split it for easier discussion was deliveries is four hundred and fifty-seven. What I mean by deliveries, our farmers will order stuff in bulk to get it cheaper, and we have a lot of them who do that. We coordinate some of that. Just this week, we received eighteen pallets of organic nutrients that come from Virginia. The farmers order that in bulk, and then they reduce their shipping tremendously and then put those, the big shipment onto their little trucks. So it comes in on a big truck, out on a bunch of little trucks, and it saves a ton of money. We do the same thing with some 4H show feed. We do the same thing with helping farmers buy clam shells for vegetables, jam jars to put jam in, boxes so that they can box their produce, and anything we can utilize those loading docks for to save them money is represented there. We also do deliveries of product comes through there. We do a big order of raspberry, blackberry plants, strawberry plants, all of that stuff. The users are people actually walking in the building and using something, using the freezer, using the cooler, using the ice machine, using the kitchen, that's the three hundred and twenty-nine number. To the right of that, you see a bar chart, economic impact, and there are four charts there that identify some benefits the county receives because we are doing what we do. The blue chart represents the number of grants that we're working with to bring into the county in two thousand and sixteen or we are associated with. All of that number, just to be honest, we did not come directly to Madison County. I oversee a program that brings money into western North Carolina as well, so that's represented there, so I don't want to mislead you that all that may did not come directly to recipients of Madison County, but a lot of it did. The green chart are sales of product that went through our value-added center, Christmas trees, wreaths, and other products, that's a large number, three hundred and thirty-four thousand. Estimated value of product that went through the value-added center is a very large number. That one is estimated, now stated as estimated, it's hard to capture, but every product that comes through there, well, I've got one lady who sells thirty cows a year, one pound at a time, and that comes through our freezer. She sells it for sixteen dollars a pound. Add that up, that gets big quick. That's just one person. A lot of those people, a lot of products are moving through there. When you add the value of all that organic fertilizer that comes through there, it's thousands and thousands of dollars, et cetera. That's where that estimate comes from. And then the chart to the right is what directly is paid by NC State and A&amp;T State University to help our salaries, our travel, our computers, or something else they pay for. It's a smaller number, those four things they pay for, and that's that number. So, it's like a five-to-one ratio. By discounting those numbers, you're getting a pretty good bang for your buck for what you guys put in. We thank you for every dollar you give us, just want you to understand that it is well-received. The bottom corner, and I'll be quiet, is a more focused number on the volunteers. We did have a total of one hundred and seventy-eight volunteers that we utilized during the year that contributed seven hundred and eleven hours. There's a federal dollar figure that's attached to that, and they do the equation, and that came up to a sixteen thousand seven hundred dollar benefit to the county from those volunteer services. That is my report. Thank you very much for being patient, Watson.
Thank you. And Ross, thank you and all of your folks who watch you do. You do an outstanding job. Thank you. Joe, if I have any comment? Alright, Mr. Donnie Losz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, your notebook, you got this tax report, similar format to what you've seen before. The first group there were cases that we actually heard in court earlier this week in front of Judge Harrison who was over here. We got judgments to proceed with the sale of those items listed there, except for Breakaway, which, as you know, is the largest tax delinquency we had in the county. When the complaint was sent down to be served on Breakaway's agent in Raleigh, the Sheriff of Wake County did not properly fill out his return of service, which we are going to have to send that back down there. There are five other parties in that lawsuit, including IRS and several other agencies. All of those parties have been served, so that is going to create basically a thirty-day delay. You must be unable to proceed with that, and you shouldn't appear back on the calendar for next month. The next item, we, or the items that we, the tracks of land that we collected back from the January, so we still have one of those that was in upset the last month, and it still remains an upset, the destinatario property in Mars Hill. There's two parties that just keep heading back and forth, much like we had with the jail, so that just keeps going out. We pretty well, collections for last month have been pretty well what they've been for the last two or three months, right in the sixty thousand dollar range, the precise number was sixty-two thousand and sixteen dollars and twenty-seven cents, which that should keep us ahead on the percentage that we've been following before fiscal year. I'm sure Mr. Gia has those precise numbers, and he may shed those video in his reports. We're holding steady with the collections here where we ought to be, and you've got enough cases, I think, in the pipeline to maintain at least this level, and then I'm going to get some of those big ones that are coming, like Breakaway, and that should really help us out. So I'm still hoping that we will get Breakaway in for this fiscal. If not, it'll be really close. Any questions, comments?
Good question. Not it? Thank you again. Well done.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Couple of general update items for everyone. There was a convening hosted by the Association of County Commissioners on March second regarding the state audit of the Medicaid program, NCFAS, and those eligibility determinations. The, as you recall from our January meeting, the state selected ten counties of various sizes that part of that audit, Madison, was one open, and there were several issues found in all of those, most of those counties. We were about in the middle as far as the number of issues that were identified regarding eligibility determination for Medicaid. We were also notified of that same issue in our own audit. So it's a statewide issue involving some areas where the counties can improve, but also where the state can work on their implementation of their NCFAS software program. So Commissioner Gentry, who is also a member of the Social Services Board, Social Services Director Connie Harris and myself, attended this meeting relatively informative, if for no other reason to see, that most counties are going through the same thing, various sizes. Wilkes County is one that is closest to our size, even though they're well over twice our size, that has done fairly well, and Connie has talked with them before the audit came out and has been following some of the best practices that they've used, and also following through the action plan that she came to you with in January. She has seen success there, but I think that was a beneficial meeting, and the state is a little hesitant to accept too much responsibility for NCFAS at this point, probably because whatever issues were there were there when it was rolled out two years ago, you know, and probably set in stone from when it was budgeted years before that. But that meeting did take place, and just to put things in perspective, Wake County hired to deal with this problem, they hired, they just hired two hundred more people, and it's amazing how different these four counties can be in the state. The budget for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, initial department budgets that came in, revenues or, sorry, expenses for next year, the initial run expenses are exceeding revenues by nearly three hundred thousand dollars. A little look at some other revenue issues and tax collections and looking at what's realistic and maybe doing a little better on those, brings it down to about two hundred thousand, which is in line with where we've been the past few years, and between now and June, we have to figure out how we're going to make some reductions in order to balance the budget for next year. Insurance quotes for health and other insurances will be critical, that will come in at the end of this month, and that shortfall reflects just to maintain basically the present level of service, so that includes no new positions, no new initiatives, and no raises for anyone. I will be meeting with department heads over the next month and preparing to, I think, you all toward the end of April into early May to figure out how to continue that process and get it in line. As I've been sort of telling you for about a year, it's getting harder and harder, just looking through some of the initial budgets where I used to go in and find three thousand dollars in office supplies and things where we'd underspent over time, it's down to two or three hundred because we've done it. So we're really running out of wiggle room, and... they just hired 200 more people. And it's amazing how different these counties can be in the state. The budget for fiscal year 17, 18, initial department budgets that came in, revenues or, sorry, expenses for next year, the initial run expenses are exceeding revenues by nearly $300,000. A little look at some other revenue issues and tax collections and looking at what's realistic and maybe doing a little better on those brings it down to about $200,000, which is in line with where we've been the past few years. And between now and June, we have to figure out how we're going to make some reductions in order to balance the budget for next year. Insurance quotes for health and other insurances will be critical. That will come in at the end of this month. And that shortfall reflects just to maintain basically the present level of service. So that includes no new positions, no new initiatives, and no raises for anyone. I will be meeting with department heads over the next month and preparing to, I think you all, toward the end of April into early May to figure out how to continue that process and get it in line. As I've been sort of telling you for about a year, it's getting harder and harder. Just looking through some of the initial budgets where I used to go in and find $3,000 in office supplies and things where we'd underspent over time, it's down to 200 or 300 because we've done it. So we're really running out of wiggle room, and we're going to have to make, again, some tough decisions going into next year. Courthouse renovation spoke with French Broad Electric last week. And this week, their contractor that they're using for the installation, there were some health issues and other issues on the building that delayed that work. They are planning end of this week, early next week, to have everything turned on with the mini splits that will cover the whole building. Furniture for the three rooms that have been renovated is scheduled to be delivered at the end of next week. Wiring has been run for computers. Administrative office of the courts have to make some changes and run their stuff. Or it's run. They just have to let it switch, it sounds like. So it looks like end of this month, which is week after next, clerk staff should be moving into those new offices. And then we'll be looking at work on one office at a time, the remaining space down at the courthouse. As you all know, but I'll announce for the public, our new finance officer, Rita Hollers, CPA, will be starting work on Monday. We're excited to have her join us. She has about 15 years' experience as a CPA. And again, we'll be beginning Monday, so we'll look forward to working with her and look forward to having that position filled. Any questions about any of that?
Forrest, could you explain to the folks by having a CPA, what that does for us as a county and what that saves us as a county?
By having, we have been written up in our audit in the past, and it's quite common in small counties to be written up for not having. Basically, the binding says that your finance staff does not have the training or experience necessary to finish the complete audit and then close the books. So that's an automatic binding. Madison County has dealt with that the last three or four years by employing a local CPA. We paid that person about $2,000, $2,500. It's varied from year to year. That takes that binding away, but there is an expense there. In addition, there are some issues that our auditor has to do when they come in at the end of the fiscal year to basically close out the books so that they can actually do the audit. And by having a CPA, we will be able to oversee a complete finishing of everything, closing out of our books. So the auditor comes in. We should save us $15,000 on our audit fee, we're estimating. It may take a year to get there because this person's going to be coming in toward the end of the current year. It's not necessarily a reflection on our staff capability. They do very well and have done very well. But this is a simple updating of credentials that is important for the county, and will end up saving us money and should help us about with all of our finances and feeling comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Which of the furniture budget did they spend?
For those three rooms, furniture and blinds, it came in just under the amount per room. So about $15,000. Next item is a proclamation, proposed proclamation, declaring April 4th as National Service Recognition Day. This is a coordinated effort of the National League of Students, the National Association of Counties, and the Corporation for National and Community Service, particularly relating to AmeriCorps and Senior Corps. This is something that Land of Sky has brought to us that we have participated in in the past. Madison County benefits from those programs. We have some volunteers we have that work at our mill sites and at our senior centers. Basically companionship, as well as some educational opportunities that they provide. Not to mention, now that's who it's targeting, but we know we benefit greatly from volunteer service at our animal shelter, our library, cooperative extension, as Ross mentioned a few minutes ago, and then all the people who volunteer to serve on the boards in various capacities. So very important our county benefits for volunteer service, whether officially through the government or not. So I have this resolution for your consideration.
Is there any question or discussion about the recognition proclamation? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the Recognition Day for National Service Proclamation as presented. So moved by Commissioner Rice. Seconded by Commissioner Winkle in further discussion. All those in favor, let me know by raising your right hand. Thank you, Forrest.
Surplus property. At your last meeting, you accepted initial offers on three parcels. One of those was Barnard property near Barnard, perhaps, near Barnard Park. That property is still in the upset process. The current bid is $18,500. It's being re-advertized tomorrow. That will start a new 10-day period. If we get a bid tomorrow, we'll immediately re-advertize. So we're not waiting for 10 days. So it should go a little quicker. On two other properties, they were advertised for the full 10-day period, and no upset bids were received. Those two properties were property at 142 Miller Road, which was required through tax foreclosure a couple of years ago. The $3,000 offer covers taxes owed and legal fees. That was accepted at the last meeting. Have a resolution that Attorney Loes has prepared that I will hand to you now for your consideration of final acceptance.
I know I was being sarcastic.
I just noticed far the top of the resolution still says surplus school. If they are late to adopt this, help school delay it. I use this from a tenth of a school surplus property. Can I understand the part?
My question was going to be, that's what we pay. They don't have to upset that.
We pay a little bit.
Okay. So they're being... Does that create any necessity for delay?
On what?
On approval of this first just...
What I would do if you want to make a motion to approve it, just make that motion deleting the word "school" out of the resolution.
All right. Is there any other discussion? The chair will move that we adopt this resolution with the deletion of the word in the second sentence, "school," as part of the motion. Seconded by Commissioner Briggs. Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting this bid for 142 Miller Road, let me know by raising your right hand.
And that revenue would be accounted for in our prior year's tax collections. The next resolution, which I see does not have "school" on it, is for property at the former Barrow River Collection Center near Millville. You received a $4,000 offer last month, and no upset bid was received. So you have the option of adopting or rejecting it or accepting it.
How much property is that? How many acres? 10 acres?
Post-it stamp.
It's like three tenths.
Yeah, three tenths. All right. Is there any discussion relative to the resolution on the piece of property located at 15690 US Highway 2570 in Marshall? Chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You make the motion.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution to sell this property.
Motion made by Commissioner Rice. Seconded by Commissioner Briggs. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you. And that property the county has had for a number of years, that $4,000, we have the revenue line from the sale of El Jiel. We'll retire that sale of surplus property. So that will go from the 98 and change to 102.
And that wasn't a tax foreclosure, right?
Correct. Was not. You also have a revised offer for property you considered last month for several lots. The Wolf Mountain Development bid is for the same amount, $70,500. The difference is a few of the lots that were in the offer last month have been taken out, slightly lowering the overall tax value and slightly lowering the overall amount of taxes owed. So that's there for your acceptance, rejection, or table of whatever you think.
So lots have been taken out, were of little, no value, essentially? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. It reduces it slightly, but I don't have the number in front of me from last month,
Well, I don't mind. I will state again what I have stated before, that at this price, and even if the amount of property is relatively the same, a few acres less, a few acres more, I think that that offer is dramatically less than what that property is worth. My personal opinion. It is less than the average price for farm property in the same neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, I would stand with my comments from prior meeting. I would agree with you on your statement that it's... The offer is substantially too low.
Point. How much did that cost us already to have this property? It was a lot. I believe you mentioned at the last meeting, $1,400 or...
That was probably a different, that was probably a lot in the country club.
That's not the same problem.
Not the same problem. But it does, we're not collecting any taxes on it as it sits there. But we're not, you know. So that's kind of always the balance.
None of this is subject to association dues at this time, no?
Well, you know, like I say, you've got to start somewhere. And of course, if you don't agree with that, that's fine. But you start something, and if we don't like it, we can always reject. That's my fault. That's been my fault.
Does anyone have a motion relative to this, or does this just pass through?
I make a motion that we reject it.
I will motion by Commissioner Rice to reject it. I will second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of rejecting the bid, raise your right hand. All those voting in the opposition, raise your right hand. It would appear we have a tie vote, and this will pass through.
It didn't come out too good, did it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the offer based on the fee or based on the contingency that we have language in the acceptance, that we have the ability to reject the final amount if we're not satisfied with it. This would allow us to begin the bid process. And if it doesn't turn out in a way that's satisfactory to the majority of the members of this board, then we would have the right to cancel the sale if the majority of this board so chooses to do so once the 10-day upset period is expired.
Motion?
I'll second that motion, but that's the way it is anyway.
No, we have to write it into the contract, do we not?
That's what we did make that modification last month to include that as standard. So in the offer that was made in this one, it's that language contained within that offer.
Okay, so it's already included. Okay, very good. So then I would make a motion that we accept the offer in order to start the upset bid process, knowing that at the end, if we're not satisfied, the majority of this board can vote to reject that.
Seconded by Commissioner Briggs. Discussion? All those in favor to accept this bid under the standard conditions that we now have, which would allow for upset and allow for rejection if bids were not satisfactory to the majority of the board, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed in the like class? Similar to the previous motion, it is in advance. All right. Forrest?
Your February financial report, which I apologize for you not receiving long time this month. We are 67% of the way through the year as of February 28. And as of that point, our general fund revenues were at 74.6%. General fund expenses were at 63%. So far through the year, our gain is 2.7 million. So our revenues that exceeded expenditure by 2.7 million, that compares to $2 million at this point last year. So we're doing about $700,000 better. Landfill, that's for general fund, landfill revenues are at 92.8%
Forrest, the increase in revenues with the landfill operation. Forrest, the increase in revenues with the landfill operation, is that primarily due to, I don't know, the cards, obviously, if I was collecting taxes more at the first of the year we get the cards? Is that also reflective of additional volume that we're seeing?
A little bit of both. The...
Tipping fee increase too, huh?
The tipping fee increase. You look at the disposal cards line, as of 2020, this year it's 1,00473. Last year it was 1,402. So that's $71,000 greater, probably due to volume. Also, that ties, not volume, I'm sorry, tying to the collection rate with taxes. They tie very much in there. If you look at construction demolition, as well as the other line that deals with our tipping fees, I'm not running off the construction demolition, is significantly higher, 66.5 versus 42.6, and we're actually at 99% of what we budgeted. That is from volume as well as the $2 or $3 increase to match surrounding counties.
But if you look at our electronics, they're way up compared to last year.
Other questions or observations, gentlemen?
Disposal cost fees actually is, is where you can see the tipping fee for commercial haulers, and that's actually a little bit, we're doing well, but it's a little lower than it was last year. That may be because we overprojected our budget last year. We might have to look at a longer trend and see.
Well, and part of that was, I think, Forrest, we had during our discussions, was that we were lower than the surrounding counties, so people were coming from out of county to dispose of it here. Now maybe they're disposing of it in their own county.
That's right. Which should also, the less we have coming in should slightly reduce our hauler deal intensity. Next, you have budget amendment, which I hand to you, your third and final version tonight. We found a small mistake that mattered today, we fixed it, and that was in the landfill. We had some lines that were moved that had some questions about, it wasn't heard, so it was out. But the budget amendment in front of you adjusts for prior year's property tax collections. We overcollected in the years 03, 04, 6, 7, 8, and 2011 by about $8,790. We're reducing the amount budget from 2014 prior years because it was a little high in what we budgeted. Our overall $715,000 prior year tax goal stays the same, it just changes what year it would be collected from, which is a very vague prediction to begin with. Barnard Park maintenance, it's $1,400. Additional fees were received from rafting companies. The landfill, an adjustment for pulling money from reserves to cover potential equipment purchases. No equipment would be purchased from that money without approval outside of very small purchases. It would still be made where to be, but as it stood now, we sold a good deal on something today. We didn't have the money in the line, couldn't do it, so that puts it there to make it available. Social services, some rearrangement of some of the economic assistance money, crisis money. Health Department passed through a triple fee grant, triple fee grant funds, revenue and expense will increase as we pay it out to our contractor. Finance following up on your vote last year, moved money from lapsed salaries into training and employee education to cover the employee assistance program. Grant from the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina, a five-year grant, worth $50,000, we get $10,000 at a time. You all have been notified of that. There'll be a press release later about more details for that. The sheriff's office, the school resource officer, this year we moved, since we have two school resource officers who are dedicated to school functions, but they're paid out of the sheriff's budget, we allocated on the budget, $87,180, which is a portion of their salary, to go to the schools so that we get credit for giving that money to the schools for per pupil expenses. Well, that's, we did that, but what you have, you still have to pay them out of sheriff's budget, so we have to show revenues coming from the school. That's what this does, the $87,180. And then each of the salary and benefits lines are adjusted to reflect the expenses that are going toward those. And then finally, some movement was in reserve at soil and water fund.
And Forrest, from what I understand, we had a very good February when it comes to housing of the federal inmates. You aware of that?
I've got the data, a little lower than...
Oh, was it?
Yeah. We got about 50-some thousand, we got 60,000 last month. Still very good, but we'll have to review. We're doing well, but what we need to review is what we'd already budgeted and we're not hitting what we budgeted still, what we're getting.
Oh, we're not?
Yeah.
Very good.
How'd you get that, man? How'd you find that out? I didn't, I didn't get anything on that.
There was a text message from Tom Banks.
Other questions or comments relative to Budget Amendment Number 7? The chair will entertain a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 7 dated 14 March of 17. So moved by Commissioner Rice.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Briggs. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Budget Amendment, raise your right hand. Again, the majority of these are actually clearance of foreclosures up here. Maybe all the, a couple of individuals.
I move they be set as presented?
Moved by Commissioner Winkle, that they approved as presented. Seconded by Commissioner Rice. Any further discussion? All those favor of approving the February 2017 property releases, raise your right hand. Thank you, sir. Forrest? Thank you. As pursuant to the agenda that we approved at the start of the meeting, we have covered all the agenda items. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Rice to adjourn. Seconded by Commissioner Briggs. All those in favor of adjourned, let it be known by raising our right hand. We have a work session coming up, County Library in a couple of weeks. That will be posted, that's in the public meeting room at the County Library, our next work session. Have a safe trip home, folks.